Good evening, everyone. We're calling to speed you to order. Dr. Mead, we have some to call out, please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brad Davis.
Here.
Ms. Sarah Ellis.
Here.
Mr. Charles Worthy.
Here.
Ms. Linda Davis. Ms. Carol Williams. Dr. John Nice.
Here.
Mr. Jared Bybee.
Here.
I think we have two absences, sir. And Ms. Ford, who is already in excused absence, as she let us know. Mr. Paytas should be someone that we keep in our thoughts and prayers. He's recovering from a medical issue and is on the road recovering. Doing very well, but those two absences should include him. Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. We will participate now in silent meditation and the plegialations. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, with equal fairness and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next silent business is to amend and then adopt the agenda. Knowing we have a couple of close amendments. Mr. Davis, if we could please amend the agenda. Before we jump into that, I think I skipped right ahead. We will start with the recognition of achievements and awards. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President. Dr. Mead is a member of the board. Tonight, I have the privilege of honoring many outstanding individuals in the Clark County School District for their achievements and contributions. Honorees, tonight, I will call your names. We will identify what you're being recognized for. And we ask that you will come up, receive your certificate from this wing line, and then you will go through and shake the hands of our board members as we celebrate your accomplishments. In advance, I would like to congratulate each of you for being here and being recognized this evening. Our first set of honorees are the Clark Central High School basketball team led by their coach, Black Miss Wendy McIntyre. The Clark Central High School basketball team made it to the Final Four Basketball Tournament for the first time in school history. Students represented themselves, their school, and our district in a hard-fought effort to advance to the finals. We will also recognize other members of his coaching staff as we call for certificates. Who will begin with Kanzeyion Wassa. Maja Campbell. Shanae Star. Brian Mee. Marcus Hesswich. Kadarius Johnson. May I respect? Pomonte Monford. De'Wan Smith. Sorry, one's a gorm peep. Wes Smith. De'Andre Stenbridge. And Jerick Washington. And Arius Watson. And coaches and other staff, Andre McIntyre. Teddy Fleming. Tommy Glenn. LeVarin Fortson. The iconic David Love Jones. Congratulations to our Clark Central High School boys' basketball. We also want to recognize this evening, as many of you recall, February 13th, a third grade student at Winterfield Elementary School had a major seizure. And she was transported to Athens Regional then actually taken to Children's Hospital in Atlanta due to severe temper illness. The student was hospitalized for a significant period of time, but now has returned to school and has resumed the normal joys of childhood. Tonight, we want to recognize those who, if it had not been for their quick reaction and seamless work, things could have turned out very differently. So this evening, it's my privilege to recognize the school's first responder team. Emily Hot Habbard. Kadarius Johnson. And Amy. Kristen Webb. LeVarin Fortson again. Kelly Parker. Susan Morris. Cassie Reynolds. Megan Sheek. She has to play on the front foil as their nurse to assist. Denise Vickery. Susan Boland. Perry Young. Juanita Wolf. Melody James. We would also like to publicly acknowledge the prompt response of consistent efforts of the Winterfield Police Department, Winterfield First Responders, and their EMTs. Thank you all for your efforts in saving the life of one of our dear students. And last but not least, is our Young Georgia Authors Writing Competition, Clark County Schools' winners for 2018. Congratulations to all the students who submitted their writing for this competitive review. We have an amazing group of talented young writers in the Clark County School District. The winners' stories and points were very engaging and demonstrated the hard work teachers are doing to support excellence with our students. CCSD-winning entries have been submitted to RISA for the regional competition for judging. Winners at this level will move forward to the state competition. We will now recognize the district winners for each grade level. For kindergarten from Timothy Elementary, Javier Schamar. Fourth grade, Bartis Scholz, Paisley Boy. Second grade, Timothy Elementary, Lydia Head. Third grade, from Davis Seabear, Annabelle Robinson. Fourth grade, Chase Elementary, Noah Hill Paschke. Fifth grade, from Davis Seabear Elementary, Janie Rips. Sixth grade, from Clark Middle School, Molly Harwell. Second grade, Clark Middle School, Amelia Bear. Eighth grade, Clark Middle School, Isabella Baker Johnson. Clark Central High School, Brayden Johnson. Tenth grade, Clark Central High School, Cassandra Jackson. Eighth grade, Clark Central High School, Angelique Black Smith. Twelfth grade, Clark Central High School, Deliah Adams. For tonight, congratulations to all of our honorees.
We're so proud of our students and faculty members. Excited about all the wonderful achievements. You know somebody who needs to leave for the evening, and that's quite all right, just give her $5 for the evening fee. And now we will amend the agenda. Just for amendment agenda. Can I suggest that we move up the notice of executive session before adjournment? I will have to move up the executive session notice on our agenda before adjournment, so it's part of the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. If we can even move that up to in between 14 and 15.
So that would be moving 15 from this to the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I just carried the DA all the way down.
Is there a motion to amend the agenda? As Dr. Mead has indicated, moving the executive session between 14 and 15 on our agenda. Ms. Williams, thank you very much. All in favor? Can we get our amendments to the agenda? Yes, Mr. Davis.
I have three amendments.
Thanks a lot. Sorry about that.
I have three amendments I would like to introduce to the board. One is that we have been asked to make proposals for the GSBA legislative positions for next year and the year after. And so we have three proposals that I would like for us to discuss and vote on. We need to do this by the 18th if we're going to submit them. So that would be my first amendment to the agenda.
And to be clear, this is for discussion and adoption of the GSP legislative proposals from the district.
Right. The title of the hard copy you have in front of you is GSBA legislative positions. And only the bold that would be actually submitted for vote would be on the 18th.
And that would be as part of our action at any time?
Right.
In order to receive votes?
Yes. Thank you.
So actually, that would be number five? It would be number five as an action, correct? Is there a second amendment? Mr. Davis? Any questions, conversation around that? All in favor of amending the agenda to include the legislative, GSP legislative proposals as action item number five? All in favor? Okay. Thank you.
I've got two other amendments as well, Mr. President. One is Governor Deal currently has two bills that are on his desk to decide whether or not they will become law or he will veto them. One is HB 217. And that bill expands the tax credits for private education. And HB 787, which is a bill that will increase public funding for charter schools. The legislative, our government relations committee has already studied this. And we've talked about these bills previously at our meeting. And I ask that we submit a letter to the governor. And you have a copy of what was written thus far, complimenting the governor for eliminating the austerity cuts, which we're very pleased, but also asking him to veto these two pieces of legislation. And I ask that this be a consideration of the board tonight. He hasn't signed it yet. He's got another 30 days, 25 or 30 days to do so if they're going to become law. So I ask that the agenda be amended to consider the passage of this letter for this board.
Action item number six?
Yes.
So the proposal is actually at number six, a letter to Governor Deal. Is there a second for that motion? I'm sorry. All in favor? Four, right. I believe we need two-thirds of the majority to include it in the agenda. Is that your time as well? So we will not include that as part of our agenda?
I have another motion that I would like to have us consider in terms of amending the agenda. Senator Tippins, who is the Senate Education Committee Chairperson, who has been a very strong ally for public education. He, because of the passage of HB 787 through the legislature, he has resigned his position. And I've been talking to folks, both statewide and locally. This is a real concern. And so this is a letter that complimented him on his past achievements in terms of defending public education, but asking that he not resign from the chairperson position of the Senate Education Committee. He's been too strong of an ally for us to lose him. And let me just say that I think too often, you know, we criticize our elected leaders for not doing the right thing. I think that when they do the right thing, that we at least should give them recognition. So I submit that this letter go as a discussion item for consideration for tonight's agenda. That would be action item six.
Action item six. So the action item six would be a letter that Greg's drafted to Senator Tippins. Is there a second? Mr. Davis, thank you. Any questions for Greg on that test?
Yes.
I'm sorry, amendment.
So for this amendment, are you, well, essentially, is this coming from the school board itself? Is that the only way this can be disseminated? It's from the entire board?
Well, I mean, I have personally done my part. But I think in terms of speaking on behalf of the board, I think it adds more weight to this thing because it is the will of a body, an elected body versus an individual who happens to be a school board member.
I like the letter. I bet you'll like to see me come back after becoming a school board.
All in favor then of adding to our action items number six, a letter to Senator Tippins? All in favor, please. All opposed? I believe that.
It's four points, so I just punched it.
Okay, good. So we'll add that to our action item number six. Thank you for the comment. And so we have an agenda now as amended. Have a motion to adopt the agenda? Okay, Davis, thank you very much. For a second. Amending the agenda. Yes, yes.
Part of all, we have another amendment.
Okay.
Heard, Mr. Davis.
I'm sorry. Yes, you're right.
Charles Worthy and myself just came back from the National School Board Association meeting. And so we're requesting to be able to make our report while it's fresh in our minds.
And so this would go under board reports? This is an SBA report from Mr. Worthy, Mr. Davis. Is there a second amendment? How do I go? I'm sorry. All in favor? Is he down this? Thank you. And there's one more amendment that I would like to propose. We need to also, under action items, which would be number seven, select a delegate from Clark County School District to represent us at the GSBA Legislative Meeting in Savannah. So I propose that to be number seven under action item. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Moving forward to four seconds. All in favor? Thank you. So a number of amendments, please. Let me move to this agenda. Any other amendments to the agenda? Have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I approve that to adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Two seconds. Ms. Williams, thank you very much. All in favor to adopt the agenda as amended? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, next up on our agenda, we have a number of visitors who are here to speak with us. Speakers will be limited to three timed minutes. You will see a small clock above me. And because we have a number of visitors and a long agenda, I ask that you pay close attention to that clock and wrap up quickly when that clock runs out. At this point, remarks must be concluded after the clock runs out. No speaker shall indulge your personal attacks while speaking. All comments are to be addressed directly to the Board of Education. To protect the privacy of our students, speakers shall refrain from identifying specific students by name. Personnel concerns may be addressed in writing to the superintendent or the president of the Board of Education. Our first speaker tonight will be Imani Scott Blackwell. Is the microphone on there?
Yeah, hello.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
My name is Imani Scott Blackwell. And I'm a candidate for the Board of Education, District 5 C. I'm here to share two main concerns with you all today. First, I would like to express my deep concern with processes handling students expelled from the school district. My concerns in regard to this issue are three-pronged. First, every student should be afforded access to the quality of education, including, but not limited to, access to Clark County School District campuses unless that student is a safety risk to others. Second, students should all be afforded access to teachers and tutoring support to ensure success if they are enrolled in distance learning coursework. Third, students in district distance learning settings need to be afforded the same resources typically provided in the classroom settings, for example, relevant formula sheets and graphing calculators, things of that nature. These are not just my personal feelings. A student's right to equal education is defended in the Constitution and is also recognized as an international human right. Now, since we're on a short span of time, I'd like to kind of switch gears a bit and use the remainder of the time to condemn the use of Title I funds for the Avid program. I am unsure whether to use these funds for anything other than their intended purpose to help underachieving students, particularly low-income and minority students. And Avid is explicitly directed to middle students. I'm even more concerned by the lack of proof that this will help any student at all. It has been recently brought to my attention that the research studies cited on Avid's webpage and in the Avid presentation presented at the meeting a few weeks ago showed that, at best, Avid showed no significant impact on high school students. And at worst, the research concluded that at the middle school level, Avid students actually underperformed their non-Avid peers. I hope the board will seriously consider these concerns and reconsider Avid's use in Clark County schools altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janet Frick.
Hi. My name is Janet Frick, and I am the parent of a Sears-Holz 10th grader and a Hills and Seven grader. My children have been in CCSD public schools for the entirety of their K-12 education, and I've been in Athens for 20 years. I'm speaking today about three matters to which I believe the board has should devote some attention. These concern the guiding ethics and principles that I believe unite all of us in CCSD because we are all truly committed to making sure that all of our students are educated in an equitable and fair manner. My first point is exactly the one that I'm on, it's not black and white, so I won't reiterate it, but every student should have full access to every campus that is appropriate for them, including and especially our alternative campuses, Classic City High and Catapult. Number two, students should have as much time to finish these classes as they need. If a student has had to miss class for some life reason, whether that be childbirth or prison time, they should have sufficient additional time when they reenter the system to finish their courses. If a student is trying to do the right thing, we need to remove barriers, not insert them. Number three, waivers. In a March 13, 2018 story in the paper about Dr. Don Myers described an encouraging statistic that more families are waiving discipline hearings when a student has committed a serious infraction, which is fine. However, a waiver should never be offered when the outcome of signing that waiver is for a student to be expelled. In such cases, the hearing should always be held, and it should always include an impartial outside advocate for the student, someone who is not employed by the district. The presence of a parent or an impartial outside advocate is always necessary, even if the student is over the age of 18. Although older students have the legal right to make their own decisions, they are still in a power differential position, and they may feel pressured to sign something that is not in their best interest. So in sum, every student should have full access to the campus of the school they're attending. There should be no arbitrary age cutoff for students to receive services. Waivers should not be on the table if a student is potentially being expelled. And even if students are over the age of 18, they should always have a parent or outside advocate of their choosing at any disciplinary hearing that takes place. I want to close by saying that I appreciate the open communication and transparency that this board is working to develop. And I just want to say that the community is engaged, paying attention, and ready to advocate publicly for fair and just policies for all persons. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katrina Evans.
I'm Katrina Evans. I'm a product of public education myself, and I have two children, one at Chase, one at Clark Middle. Regarding the timeframe of the principal's hiring, if our collective goal is to hire the best and the brightest candidates, I'm conservative we're waiting around until June 7th to do this. I believe the second round of reviews takes place May 11, and the concern is that the best and the brightest may not wait until June 7th. Three out of the five principal positions vacancies were public knowledge months ago, and yet even those positions are not being filled until June 7th. It seems again that we're missing opportunity, and the best candidates, unless being hired from within, will go elsewhere. If the ideal candidate is really from within, you know, that's great, but that can also create a ripple effect of vacancies, and that compounds the issue further. This timeframe seems to follow last year's, but I really expect that we can do better. I implore you to work diligently to improve the process now and for the future. Additionally, once the new principals have hit the ground, I also hope we let each of them individually decide if Avid is the correct program for their school. As a Chase parent, where kids seem to be thriving and test for support that view, I'm personally nervous to rock the boat, especially if teacher shifting may occur and, to me, maybe create a change for change of saying. I think that each new leader should make their own decision, or even better, allow the LSGT and principals to decide what's best for each school. Lastly, as a Chase parent, I've kind of coasted around, listfully ignorant, and the principal shift has kind of opened my eyes a little bit. One question I had is really why isn't the board prioritizing or streamlining or uploading the meetings any longer? I see that the last meeting uploaded was June 8, 2018. You know, it's possible I'm missing the content in different location, but I think that transparency is a good thing. Actively engage CCSD community members, that's a good thing. And resuming the streaming will go a long way, so I respectfully ask that that resumes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Trina Max.
My parents had a tolerance, zero tolerance policy for students. They laid out their code of conduct, and it didn't include timeouts. It was often communicated non-verbally. As we grow, the consequences got our attention more as they affected our social lives. No football or basketball games, no trips to the new mall that was built, and definitely no soul night at skate rink. And if you weren't there, you were not square. You were square. What I appreciated much later was how I grew through their disciplinary practices. They laid out their punishment, and they taught with us about our actions, and engaged us to express why we made the decisions that we had made and what we would do differently. It wasn't often that we got in trouble, but we learned with each incident. They built us up and gave us opportunities to grow. This is what I want to see more of in our district, on a larger scale, more restorative justice. The discipline issues are very complex, but I'm speaking more of children who are in this discipline, and now it's time for us to restore them and make sure that they have the ample opportunities to finish school and do what they need to do. I am not proud of to be CCSD when our students are not given the chance to learn from their mistakes and work for better long-term goals and outcomes. I am not proud to be CCSD when students are punished over and over again and not given the resources to continue on their academic journey. I am not proud to be CCSD when as adults, meaning all stakeholders, from the superintendent, associate superintendents, principals, board members, staff, policemen, resource officers, and we, the people, the community. We don't always get it right, and most recently, we got it wrong. And now it is time for us to correct the things that we are not proud of. It is an exciting time, and for the most part, from what I've heard and seen from Dr. Means, as our new leader, our new superintendent, there's hope for a new culture, a new branding, new policies, and higher level of equity and success for all students. And it's always the right time to do the right thing.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Karen Grove.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm asking that in the spirit of transparency, the district resumes posting recordings of board sessions to the district's webpage, sorry, YouTube channel. The board event page includes a link to the videos, but as somebody else noted, the mystery support meeting on the page is from June 2017. Since that time, it has been ordered to stay involved and informed as a parent. I work 10 hours on Thursdays, and my husband goes straight from teaching eighth grade all day to teaching in footballs all night, after arranged childcare, squeezing a quick meal from kids and drop them off, in the 20 minutes between leaving work and coming here. I know it's not about me, but I do want to share the extremes to which one has to go just to stay informed. When decisions are made at these meetings and not shared with the broader community, it implies sole involvement from only a privileged few, those with transportation, childcare, and a typical 40-hour work week. I also want the board to know the extent to which parents are trying to stay involved. To dismiss those parents who have questions with statements such as, and I quote, "We get caught up in what, we get caught up with what the naysayers say." Typically, people who are excited and positive, they do not feel the need to have to rise up in speed. It's the naysayers and the negative people who have the platform. This was in our last week's session. What an unfortunate way to characterize parents who are asking questions. I have to say, I find this attitude emphatical to the spirit of equity, accountability, and social emotional learning that this district claims to focus on. I've noticed that over the last nine months, the role of the local school governance teams has been greatly reduced. The CCSD organizational chart has changed drastically with more positions in the top. I would have liked to affirm the board's comments as these decisions were made. The composition of principal selection committees has also changed dramatically since this time last year. Would we affirm the reasons why we attended keyboard meetings, or are all these decisions made behind closed doors now? I hope to see the recordings of past year-pips to the YouTube channel as soon as possible so that the district can look up to the promise of transparency and equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Ms. Willa Phamra.
I started to write something down, but I don't want to do that because I'm going to speak for my spirit tonight, because something is really bothering me. And that is the fact that Thursday, last Thursday, was the first time I heard about the Avid program. And I called it a program because if the school board, the parents, myself, if we do not take a holistic approach to our children and include the whole family, I don't care what we put in place, it is not going to succeed. I, I hope that everybody here will hear this and take this into consideration, because in this particular neighborhood, poverty is at 58%. That is only a few steps away from Clark Central High School. For me, as I stand here today, as the face of the children, 58% poverty means that my parents are likely not one paycheck, but one missed day of work from being put out in the apartment, not having food at home. So if we do not approach this and partner up with people who are doing things in the city of Athens to make everybody's lives better, I feel that we have failed, and we're headed on road path. The gap is going to continue to be like this, and it's going to continue to be like this if we continue to put schemes and programs in place and not consider people, consider the children, because whether we like it or not, every child who is in this situation leaves home every morning with the burden of their parents on their shoulder. 58% poverty means that some kids don't even know what they're going to wear to school the next day. They don't know where the next breakfast is coming from. And if we cannot figure out some way to help the whole family, we are forevermore going to be sitting around in a room talking about we're going to do this, we're going to put this in place, we're going to put this. It's never going to happen until we all get real with ourselves. We might not want to do it. We might think that that job is too big, but trust me, there are people who are out in Athens now doing the work. Partner with these people, work with them, not only this neighborhood, but all across Athens, but especially this neighborhood. I spent the last six years in this neighborhood, and these people, the people that live here are wonderful people. I have friends over here, and we need to do something about 38% poverty. But I leave you with the fact that there is 58% poverty in this area right around Clark Central High School.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Brad Andrews.
All right, most of all, my name is Brad Andrews. I'm a teacher at Sears-Holmes, been there for 17 years, also parent of four kids in the district. All right, I've got a few more left. You may kiss.
Awesome. There, good night.
All right, sorry. Okay, episode 2016, discipline in schools has been a major focus in our community. I think most of us agree that the traditional approach of assigning punishments, whether a rule was broken, is ineffective and even counterproductive to the development of compassionate, rational, conscientious individuals. I applaud the school board at the district office, efforts in revamping student code conduct. Simply redefining set of rules, expectations, and assigning appropriate punishments will never transform the culture of our schools and classrooms in a meaningful way. When people use the word "discipline" in education, comes to mind first compassion and love, meaningful discussions, fostering the best in every child. Unfortunately, most of us think punishment or consequence that saddens students. Punishment is meant to shame individuals into complying with rules, whether individuals value the rules or not, and the shame inevitably turns into anger. Until educators are able to help students internalize the values of effective communication, taking responsibility for their choices, positive conflict resolution, and mending relationships with others, school culture will continue to be centered around power and domination, and students will continue to do everything in their power to resist being dominated and to assert their dignity through opposition. Instead of teaching compliance of the system, we must focus instead on teaching students how to exercise self-control. In the last two years, I've attended many school board meetings, work sessions, blah, 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 blah. In many of these meetings, I've heard school board members, district personnel, teachers, and many community members extolled the virtues of restorative justice, which places the individual and relationships at the center of discipline practices rather than the rule that's been broken. Just over a week ago, two school board members expressed in a public forum their belief that restorative justice was an integral part of our code of conduct and that it was fully implemented in every school in the district. I wish this were true, but it's far from reality. I'm convinced that these board members wish it were true as well. Now is the time to talk, the time to stop wishing, stop simply talking about restorative justice, and start working together to make restorative justice reality for our community. I have four children between the ages of 10 and 13, and discipline in our house looks like long, direct, and sometimes uncomfortable discussions which do not end until viable solutions have been generated and relationships are strengthened. Sometimes it takes a matter of days and follow-up discussions. At some point, the development of young adult even appropriate techniques like timeout and natural consequences fall short. True discipline must penetrate individuals' conscience and reconstruct healthier, more productive ways for individuals to meet their needs. This is the kind of discipline my kids deserve, this is the kind of discipline every student in Clark County deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amelia Haines.
Hello all, I'm Amelia Haines, and I'm a colleague of Frank Andrews. CCSD Code of Student Conduct states that, quote, "CCSD is committed to the principles of preventative and restorative practices. The goal of preventative and restorative practices is to repair harm caused by misbehavior through discovering what happened, what harm was caused, and determining what can be done to right the harm and what can be done in the future to avoid additional problems. Examples of restorative practices include formal and informal conferences with students about their behavior and restorative circles," end quote. Although I'm excited to hear that the Georgia Conflict Center has conducted introductory training sessions for all CCSD principals and for teachers at various schools, and has even conducted a rainfall of restorative circles in the district, all of this is comparable to a person dabbing one toe in a pool of water. It barely causes a ripple. In order for our children to benefit from restorative practices, we must first practice them. These practices must become the underlying fabric of how every school employee thinks about and interacts with students. In order for this to happen, the district must make the commitment to develop a comprehensive implementation plan for the district, provide the resources and instructions needed for every school, allow schools to develop plans that work for the unique communities, and support teachers and administrators in their journey in providing fair, equitable, and ethical discipline for every student. Evidence suggests that for restorative practices to take root and to positively affect school culture and academic achievement, schools must be prepared to invest the necessary time, energy, and resources in the first three years of the process for the most key. The initial investment is large, but evidence shows that the impacts are well worth the investment. Rhetoric alone will never transform the system. It's going to take hard work and dedication to doing what's right for our students. Research shows that restorative justice model not only succeeds in achieving goals, but also increases students' achievement as well. Ask any teacher or student to identify the largest barrier to learning, and I'm pretty confident they're going to agree on behavior. When students respect each other and the learning environment, when they connect their behavior to how it affects those around them, and when they connect their choices to achieving their future goals, everyone benefits and everyone is able to achieve at their highest levels. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight, Ginger Lehman.
Thank you. My name is Ginger Lehman, and I'm an 11th grade English teacher at Clark Central High School. I'm a member of the school improvement leadership team, as well as the Clark Central Local School Governance Team. I'm also a parent of four children who have come up through Clark County schools. In my nine years teaching in Clark County and eight years as a member of the school improvement team, data has consistently been a focal point. We have spent a tremendous amount of time poring over and analyzing this data. The achievement gap amongst students in Clark County, while alarming, is not new or shocking to those of us who work most closely with the students represented by those numbers. I'm in favor of sharing this data with a wider audience and bringing more people into the discussion around how to address this very serious problem. I'm certainly in favor of shining a light in possible areas of inequity and striving to find sustainable remedies so that all children have every opportunity to succeed in high school as well as college and career. Since I've been working at Clark Central, many programs and initiatives have been foisted upon already overworked teachers in order to address the achievement gap. There's not time to list them all here. With each of these new ideas comes time-consuming trainings, documentation, accountability, walkthroughs, and I have willingly participated in all of these. I have often been a cheerleader, encouraging colleagues to embrace new ideas and make them meaningful in their own classroom work. What does concern me, however, with the idea of another new initiative or program such as Avid, is the lack of input from stakeholders. The local school governance teams are elected bodies made up of parents, teachers, and community members who have committed their time and expertise to this process, who have gone through extensive training, and whose bylaws state that they should have input into curriculum and instruction decisions as well as school operations. A review of local school governance team minutes makes it clear that they were not a part of the decision to implement Avid. I have participated in many needs assessments over the years, including recently as an LSGT. Every time, the root cause of the achievement gap involves the social-emotional well-being of the students and the families in our community. I'm encouraged that Dr. Means has identified this as one of his three focus areas for our students. Fortunately, teachers and administrators have ideas about how to address the emotional needs of our students and support their families at the same time. More teachers in smaller class sizes, more family engagement coordinators, more behavioral specialists, more counselors in the building to support both children and adults, more opportunities to facilitate community involvement, support and expand the communities and schools program, maintain and support community I'm encouraged that Dr. Haines has identified this as one of his three focus areas for our students. Fortunately, teachers and administrators have ideas about how to address the emotional needs of our students and support their families at the same time. More teachers in smaller class sizes, more family engagement coordinators, more behavioral specialists, more counselors in the building to support both children and adults, more opportunities to facilitate community involvement, support and expand the communities and schools program, maintain and support community programs that benefit our students, like the West Broad Farmers Market, or Chesson Community, and many others, continue the work around examining the code of conduct and discipline, and continue the trainings and work around restorative justice and the PBIS model. If we are truly committed to closing the achievement gap in Clark County, this is where we need to start.
Thank you. And I thank you to all of our speakers on behalf of the board. We appreciate you being here, we appreciate your attention, we appreciate your words, and speaking up here tonight. Thank you very much.
If any of the speakers would like to give any, as we have received from our speaker, any written comments that you have made, then I will certainly call them in. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda tonight is a superintendent's report. Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to follow up with the presentation that was made to the Board of Education regarding the implementation of AVID in our schools. A total of eighteen principals in the Clark County School District decided to move forward with implementation of AVID. There are three schools, it's probably easier to not, or to talk about which schools chose not to. That's Chase Street Elementary School, Beryl Elementary School, and Clark Central High School. The rest of our building principals had an opportunity to engage more, and they made the local decision on implementation. The process now moves forward in terms of principals identifying which teachers they would like to see engage in the training, and that training begins in the summer, starts this summer. So, I just wanted to follow up, because we never talked about which schools. We talked about the process, in which schools decided that they were going to be part of the process or not. But we never talked about which school in particular, and what the next steps will be. So, those are the three schools that are not engaging, Clark Central, Beryl, and Chase. And again, those are local decisions. There is a number of different reasons why those three principals chose not to move forward. They chose not to move forward. I would also like to just share with the public, and I think the board has agreed, that you will have a special call meeting on May seventeenth. The purpose of the special call meeting on May seventeenth would be to accept recommendations for principal hires. We are conducting second round interviews the entire day of Friday, May eleventh, between Friday, May eleventh and May sixteenth, I hope. We will have an opportunity to conduct reference checks, engage in contract negotiations, and then bring new names. That is, in celebration of our initial timeframe of bringing those names to the board on June seventh. And so, I want to thank the board for your flexibility in being willing to meet for a special meeting, even though it's going to be right after another board meeting. But, May seventeenth is a special call meeting for the purpose of celebrating the hire of bill of principals. It's important to note that last year, as I was transitioning into the school system, there were a total of six principal vacancies in the school system, if I remember correctly. Coil Middle School, BHL Middle School, Classic City High School. I think we had vacancies at Cleveland Road, with Davis. Gaines, I'm sorry, thank you, to those Gaines. I was the sixth school. So, unfortunately, every year you have a race for when people make like decisions in regards to moving on. And there's a number, there's a story behind each vacancy we have. This year, the principal vacancy, as well as the number of different teacher vacancies we have in the system. I guess the last thing I would like to share with the communities that I was really happy and proud of the professional learning day that took place on Monday, April ninth. We had a number of different professional learning opportunities happening. When you're in a school system and you conducted these assessments in the first year of superintendency, you have to look at programs, you have to look at what can move achievement for your school system. And I'm pleased that we conducted such a neat assessment. And I'm also pleased that this is a school, faculty, overall, and community that understands that status quo isn't going to help change the performance level of students. The path of least resistance for a new leader will be to eat the status quo. But, it was my understanding clearly from this Board of Education, from the community, that if we continue to do the same thing from a program instructional standpoint, that we're ultimately failing students. So, we used Monday, April ninth, to engage in professional learning that would help move our performance away from where we currently sit, which is disappointing and underserving all of our students. One of the particular students who are in poverty, students of color. So, Mr. President, board members, community, that's the conclusion of my report.
Question. Dr. Haines, you had expressed a willingness to talk about the request for information on the West Broad property in your report tonight.
We'll post the information, Mr. Davis, regarding the request for information on the district website by Wednesday, on April eighteenth. So, the information will be posted on the website at that time soon.
Okay, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to figure out, are we on track to still? Could we have talked about having a thirty-day posting period and then a two-week to review? So, are we, is that, how does that affect our timeline?
Mr. President, if I may, one again. Mr. Davis, the request of the Board of Education of me to develop a request for information document was unique. And so, the drafting of that document, it was still in the works of others. And once it is completed, then the next step, my understanding of the process, was to make it public for the entire community to weigh in. We also have to create a technology way, a way from a technology standpoint to allow people to submit their information. And so, the meeting that we, you had on March twenty-seventh was requesting that I develop a request for information document, post it on the district's website, and then allow a window of time to people, for people to, or organizations to submit their information. And then you would reconvene as a board to vet and review those applications. We're still in line to complete all of those tasks.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Any other questions? Okay, there are a number of informational items that are included in our pocket and available to the public on our website, and I'd like your attention there. If you have any questions around those, those are, there are reports around SPOST, early head start, Athens Community Career Academy, Career Enterprise Report Meeting. So, all those are online. If you have any questions, those documents are available. That's an indirect date. The date of the parent advice report was just last Monday.
It was Monday, April ninth.
Thank you. So, let's reflect on this, Davis, as the attendees.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
We have a number of board reports. It's a report from GSBA today. I believe that Mr. Davis is out.
Thank you. Is it too late to sign on? Because I did invite myself, if anybody was going. Thank you. Is there a report from the Government Relations Committee? Yes, there is, thank you. First off, what I would like to say, and you know, there's so much that has been going on that, you know, in terms of the state legislature. We did have, Olivia kind of helped me out here, didn't Clara Suggs talk to us last time? Okay, there she is. No, I have read her today, and it was a very enlightening, you know, information that did help us in terms of formulating, at least my personal phone calls to the legislature. What we have coming up, just so that folks know, we have Angela Palmer, who is the lobbyist for GSBA, is going to be coming to present to us on Tuesday at four-thirty, this coming Tuesday, on the seventeenth. And certainly encourage all board members to attend, and anyone else from the public. Again, we're in the process of just keeping ourselves abreast about what's happening in the state legislature. In May, what I'm, May fifteenth, what I'm trying to pull together is a meeting of all our delegation. And then we have two senators that represent us, Senator Gillan, Senator Kouser, and we have three House members that represent Clark County, Representative Wallace, Representative Gonzalez, and Representative Frye. So, one has already confirmed on the May fifteenth, and so I'm still working on the others. I think that's about all I'm going to say at this point. And I wish I had more of the details that Clara presented to us, but it was something that, it was a very important session. Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
It wasn't, it wasn't on a session, but I know Clara addressed it. And I think all of us are happily surprised that the governor has fully funded case twelve. I think I read it first from Clara, and that is a huge thing. I want to give bragging of the government committee some props also, because I know that we have asked our superintendent to send letter, a letter on our legislative. And I'm not saying that the government changed, you know, of us, but I think we were ahead of the curve as far as getting out on that issue. I think talking to our legislators, talking to educators, I think it gives a whole new perspective. And I don't think that people realize how the connection of our state legislation impacts what we do locally. So, I think that is a major win for Georgia. Again, I'm not saying that our legislative agenda took that out of the governor's heart, but we did, we did step out ahead of the curve. And I would also say that I think I'm going to miss Senator Tippett's for his involvement in some other pass legislation. And I don't, again, I don't think the average person knows how the local stuff connects to the state stuff. And I think we're, but I do think we're doing a good job here now.
And, Mr. Davis, I have a request that the acknowledgement to the governor be discussed at the next Government Relations Committee meeting. Like you say, I do hope all the board members can be there and have the opportunity to talk to Angela Palmer as well.
Yeah, I will try to do that. It all depends how much of a discussion. Because I don't want to take away from, you know, she's traveling from Atlanta here, so I don't want to end up with an hour-long discussion and then give her fifteen or twenty minutes to talk. But, no, I think.
Yeah, I think that would be a long discussion.
I do, I do plan on raising the issue again, if the governor hasn't signed these two bills, in terms of extending tax credits to private education, and in terms of giving more money to charter schools, which I, you know, I think I'm going to raise that again. And let me just say that to the public, Senator Tippett resigned because of the passage of seven eighty-seven, which is an actual term to give private charter schools more money. No, I think that was, that was voted down in terms of.
No, it was not. It is action item number six.
Oh, okay.
So, can we hold that?
Sure.
Thank you. Finance Committee.
That's Mr. Larry Ham.
And we'll have, we're going to have a financial report.
We'll have a, we'll have a report soon. I think at the last Finance Committee meeting, there was a presentation of what the public will see in a few minutes from Mr. Ham. There was also a discussion regarding our ongoing issues with the submission of bills and kind of cleaning that process up. And then finally, there was a discussion on how to recalibrate the Finance Committee moving forward and looking for other objectives, things worthy of, those were some of the conversations that were discussed. There are others that I missed, or I will refer to as chair.
Yeah, well, the last meeting, we did discuss whether we wanted to continue the Finance Committee meetings. And of course, I agree with what Mr. Carol Williams said, that we don't need to disband that right in the middle of budget time. And I thought that Mr. Ham would be giving a financial report tonight.
He will, sir. He will.
As an action item.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I got you.
Policy Committee Report.
We, in Policy Committee, last time, we did equity policy and a continuous improvement policy. And at the time, there was a discussion that there wasn't anything on our current platform. Our current platform is through GSBA, and it's a way that you organize policies online so that people can look them up and find them. There wasn't an equity slot, and there wasn't a continuous improvement policy slot. And so, we were looking for where to put these policies that would make sense for people to be able to find them. And we left it at that Policy Committee meeting, that we didn't have any good options. So, we were going to go ahead and move forward with posting the equity policy and the continuous improvement policy for public review for four weeks. But, we didn't really quite have an organizational strategy at the time for how that was going to be posted, because it didn't fit in any of the slots on the GSBA platform, which is an extensive platform. It just lacked something that we thought went with that. After further discussion, Dr. Myers talked with GSBA, and they have found a great place to put it, I think, and it's descriptor code IA, which is the instructional program philosophy. And in that, we already had that policy. It already existed. It's in section I. So, we were kind of looking in a different section. But, and we already had a statement of educational equity, where we have expanded that now to create a little bit more, we flushed it out a lot better, about educational equity. Along that same lines, it's also a good place, Dr. Myers, to put the continuous improvement policy. So, you have that before you on your desk. So, we're not making any changes to the work that the Policy Committee did in committee with the verbiage, just requesting that, now that we have a good descriptor code. And there may, when we change platforms, there may be a better descriptor code down the road. But for the purposes of posting this for the four weeks, this is a sensible descriptor code to be able to post it. but for the, for the purposes of posting this for four weeks, this is a sensible descriptor code to be able to post it. So tonight, when we go to vote about posting those policies for four weeks, it's gonna be under, it's a little bit of a work in the way of the Policy Committee meeting. And so Don has been able to find a place to put that. So that will be Policy IA, it will be posted for four weeks, with the modifications that we made around educational equity and continuous improvement.
Thank you. And are those both under IA?
They are, yeah. So you've got it right here. I know it's a little less than it'd be receiving it, but it's organizational and not, not substantive, thank you.
Question?
Yes.
So in terms of, nothing's been specified or added to what we discussed?
No, you said no. Correct, it's just been plugged into IA.
Thank you. Anything from the Broadway Committee?
I mean, Mr. Page.
Mr. Page. And we added, sorry, Dr. Myers, you have something on that?
There's nothing from the Broadway Committee, sir.
Can I quote Mr. Page? We haven't bought anything, we haven't sold anything.
Uh, we added to board reports, a report from a superintendent of the National School Board Association.
Yes, Mr. Davis, Greg, I need the permission to go first. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Yeah, Mr. Davis and I traveled to San Antonio, Texas, last Friday, returned on Monday night. And I always enjoy this conference, the National School Boards Association. And the reason for that, because I'm the type of person, educator, that going to always keep up with current trends. We feed off of each other, and you're wonderful guys, I learn from you, et cetera. But sometimes it's just good to get outside the box. And I'm always impressed with this conference, because it's so very well organized. And you're talking about nine, ten thousand, maybe more than that, attendees at this conference. But anyway, I'm not gonna pull over time, I'm trying to make my report brief, I have some notes here. First of all, I was very impressed with the keynote speakers. And I've been impressed with them since I've been on this board and attended NSBA conferences. There were, the first keynote speaker for Saturday was Terry Bradshaw. He was a partback for the Pittsburgh Steelers. He won a number of Super Bowls for them, and a number of awards. And I never realized, and of course, he's an analyst for the NFL, and I never realized that Terry Bradshaw was such a motivational speaker. And I just wanted to mention that to you, simply because of the fact, he was a staunch supporter of public education. And that's what it's all about. And all the speakers over the years that NSBA invited to come and speak, they are supporters of public education. Now, this next person here, I'm looking at my notes, Ann Puntin. Now, I don't know many of you have seen ABC, another staunch supporter of public education. Occurred at the White House on many campaigns, and also, I believe it was something like five or six, maybe even seven presidents that she worked with. And she gave some good pointers in terms of our public education. Now, I can't wait to get to this one, I was listening to Dr. Means a few minutes ago. This is a very thick booklet here, and you only have two board members out there, Charles Worthy and Greg Davis. And in no way, so many, many different sessions that you can benefit from as a board member. And also networking with other board members. And I'm saying all of that to say this, it's just humanly impossible for us to attend no more than about two sessions per day, because they last about hour and a half, sometime almost two hours. But, the first session that I attended was leveling the playing field, a free-to-bring-in-equity test preparation. I made all that effort to go through this booklet on Friday night when we arrived, looking for sessions that would be similar to what Dr. Means presented on last Thursday night, ABIT. And that's what I did. Board members, you'll find this brochure at your place. Please read it. This is what I'm talking about when I said leveling the playing field to bring equity to test preparation. And I tried my best to get to these sessions very early. And when I walked in that door, the gentleman really wanted to turn me around, because it was on the standing room. And finally, he started turning people around. Because this is a tool that can really help our students. And guess what? It doesn't cost anything. Now, it's connected to the military. And the reason for that, many of our students take the ASVAB test, as well as ACT, which Georgia does SAT state. Not an ACT state, but I do know that more, you have more students to take the SAT, and a what, ACT. But, but this particular program is a self-paced program where students can improve their tests. The doctor means talking about this last week in terms of, we got to do a better job in terms of students making better scores on standardized tests, ACT and SAT. Now, I was listening to superintendent a few minutes ago. If you continue to do the same thing, day in, day out, month in, month out, year in, year out, and expecting different results, what you gonna get? You're not gonna get different results. You got to move out and try something different. And I was very impressed with the presentation, and they've got good results from this. And board members, if you just take a look at this, that the future is now, prepare for life after high school, and that's what Dr. Means talking about. Enhance math, science, English skills, et cetera. Now, I'm not gonna go, because I promise you that I'm gonna be brief. And I want you to really, really read this. And you also have a website address that you can go on and take a look at this. And Dr. Means, I really believe this is something that we need to take a look at, because I was, as I said, that room was packed, and people, and the presentation was really nice. And they're already doing this in several states, and the state of Texas is really big with this. So do take a close look at this, and see whether we can use it or not. I believe it would help our students. Now, the next.
Can you tell them that website is March two, March, the number two?
March2success.com, it's on the brochure, okay? Now, the next thing I want to mention, and I mentioned this to Dr. Means before actually traveling to Texas. I had a gentleman call me and wanted me to participate in this on Saturday, which I did. Thirty million users, thirty-two million students, that's what they cover. Sixty-six million parents, thirteen thousand districts, and they're in seventy countries. And it goes on and on and on in terms of what it covers. It covers the administration, Dr. Means, it covers the unified classroom, it covers the home, and you have, I think it's beyond infinite campus, I think it's something. And I'm gonna leave this with you, Dr. Means, before I leave tonight. I think it's something that we need to take a look at. I stayed at that interview with one of the general managers for an hour. And of course, they were trying to convince me in terms of, this is something that we need to purchase. Now, the next, and I'll make this brief, because I'm gonna download some additional information on this. CTE, Career Technical Education. I said to Mr. Davis, perhaps he should have attended this session. I had chosen a session that he's gonna be reporting on tonight, and I said, well, since it's for both of us, they go through that session there. So I went to the CTE session, and I was really happy that I did so. Let me tell you the reason why. We got to grow our academy, folks. Because what's going on around this country in terms of, and this is in conjunction with what Dr. Means said. You're going to prepare students to graduate from high school to go to college, okay? Also, why the world's worth, why do we go to the military? And I just mentioned the ASVAB a few minutes ago, that's the Armed Service Vocation Aptitude Battle, okay? Now, that's what it's all about. But now, in this particular session, I learned so much, I mean, I was just stunned in terms of what they're doing in the career academies that they're building around the country, especially in the state of Michigan, Genesee, Genesee just a county. Now, what they've done very quickly, they've gone out into the business community, they've connected education with the business community. And once they gather all of that information from the business community, or business industry, they built a curriculum around. Now, I'll give you an example. I almost passed out when they said this. Aviation. And then the Career Center in Genesee, Michigan, Genesee County, Michigan, they actually have a hangar there. They actually have a runway. They're laying planes on it, okay? And students on radio, they were listening to these people in the traffic controllers in the tower. And I was so impressed with that in terms of what they're teaching. Now, get this, students in that particular program, some of them have a pilot license before they even have a driver's license, okay? Now, the facilities, Mr. Ham, the facilities are built around what they're teaching, which I was, not the traditional way, you know, because hands-on, and also academic kind of thing. And I was really, really impressed with that. I know I've talked too long already, but board members, you have a sheet at your place like this, okay? I'm here copying this out of this booklet here. In fact, I do this every year, and I want to remind you now, you can read this yourself. You did attend the conference now, but until, I think something like maybe June the sixth, you can download the NSBA app, you can download it, okay? And you can go in and look at various sessions that you may be interested in. And also, you can request handouts from those different sessions. I would encourage you to do that, because it's some powerful information in here, and you have some powerful presenters in this. I said that very quickly, I hope you got everything that I said. If not, you can talk to me later on, and I'll explain it to you. And as I said, Dr. Means, I am going to be downloading some additional information from the CTE work session. Also, Power School's supposed to be sending me some additional information here. I thought that I would receive it by now, but I have not. But I am going to be calling them to put a rush on that. But I'm gonna leave this Power School with you, Dr. Means, so you can take a look at. That's Power School.
Thank you.
Long.
Do you have any questions for that? Yes, first off, if you all turn to page three in the packet that I gave you all, and I'm gonna skip over a bunch of stuff, but there's some things I want to call your attention to. So it's page three, NSBA Conference Convention two thousand and eighteen, is my report. And what I'm gonna ask you to do is skip down to the bottom where it says Equity and Excellence in AP classes. This is something that, when I walked in there and they began to talk, I said this is something that I certainly want to bring back. Perhaps Dr. Means is already aware of it, I would be surprised if he's not, but I think it's something that the board certainly is not. There was a presentation by the superintendent of the Township High School District two eleven outside Chicago. And also, there were two people from equal opportunity schools. And they were working together in this particular school district. The school district two eleven has been using ABIT, and is very impressed with the results. But the presentation was, they're also participating with equal opportunity schools. And I wanted to share some information with you about that organization. First off, that organization picks one hundred and fifty high schools a year. They have funding in which they will put in thirty thousand dollars for each high school, if it's matched by the local. And what they do is that, what they're, they have one single purpose, and that is to increase AP enrollment in their high schools. What the research that they put forth says is that our, that eighty percent of our students who are not taking AP classes will say that they're not being challenged. And as a former high school teacher, I guarantee you, even students that were making Cs in my class were saying they weren't challenged always. And so I think it's, I think it's across the board. And so, what this program does, what equal opportunity schools does, is it comes into, when it comes into a school district and focusing on the high schools, it does a portfolio, so to speak, on each student that is, that is not engaged in AP classes. Not looking at only their test scores and their grades, but also looking at these personal characteristics. What is their motivational level? What is their support system? And also, they also talk to teachers. And they find teachers who will say, they look for two teachers who will say, that student could be doing AP work if, if they were allowed to do so and encouraged to do so. And so, there's a lot of emphasis on identifying these students and then approaching these students. A lot of times, students don't go into AP classes according to their experiences with this equal opportunity schools, because, that's not for me. I'm not AP material, I'm just a AB, I mean, a BC student, I mean, what? It's also, it's because they don't have confidence in themselves, in the sense of, I don't want to go in there and make a fool of myself, thinking people are really smart, they're taking all these AP classes, they're geniuses, I'm just an average student. So, with, with the documentation that they do for each student, they then approach the student, they approach the parent, and they recruit these, these students into taking an AP class that is in their interest level. I mean, if they're, if they're a social studies person, they don't say, well, you need to go to AP math, you know? But they really target as they're recruiting these students. And what they've found, first off, is that school district two eleven has actually recruited over five hundred first-time AP students. And four hundred of them came from underrepresented groups. And with these additional students, their success rate never went down, didn't really go up, but it stayed the same. And something like seventy-five percent of the, of their students, you know, got three or higher, something like that, eighty percent, something like that. And they also put into place, with these new first-time AP students, they put into place kind of clubhouse study hall situation, they have night hours at the high school library. They, they really count on teachers who said, yeah, I vouch for that student. I'm a history teacher, that student knocked it out of the park when they took US History with me. And I think they can take world history as an AP class. They really count on those teachers to give support. And there are other things that they do as well, that I just want to, that are identified. Are there any questions about that? Because I'm really excited about that, and it was something that I would like to pursue in terms of this board. And so, I'm giving people kind of a first chance to say something.
Now, of course, Mr. Davis, but if you recall, and you may have said it last time, I missed it, but in Dr. Means' report last week on that, you recall him saying. it, but in Dr. Means' report last week on that, you recall him saying, every student that may be.
Right. And that's exactly where I was coming, when they, when they said that, I knew, I, I said, boy, I'm, this is right in sync to what, to what we're doing. Thank you for pointing that out, sir. Uh, that's my longest presentation. If you go down to that, to the back of that third sheet where it says, Let Her Learn: Stopping School Pushout for Girls of Color. Uh, I have asked Dr. Means, you know, we, Dr. Means gave us discipline information, uh, last fall, breakdown by, or by school, uh, and by, um, you know, uh, you know, racial makeup. I'm, I'm, I'm asking that we get the same information in terms of, um, sex. Because what, what that workshop was focused on is how girls of color, a lot of times because of, you know, certain personality traits, get, get labeled as abrasive, as outspoken, hard to work with, disrespectful. And a lot of times, they get singled out, uh, for, for discipline. So not that we're doing it in Clark County, I don't know. But I do think that in terms of at least looking at the data to see if, if there's, if there's some interesting trends that, that this district need to be aware of. The third thing I'm gonna call your attention to, and then I will, I will stop, is, uh, on the, on the, uh, on the last page, which is Changing Paradigms, One District's Journey and Adding 31 More Days of Instruction. Uh, there's a school district in Kansas City, and of course, there've been others as well, who on the basis of equity have decided to take two of their elementary schools who were the, who were the, the poorest in, in performance. And over a period of, of time, and there was a lot of work put into getting the parents involved, the bus drivers, the, the lunchroom workers, et cetera, et cetera. But actually, over a period of, uh, took them a couple of years to do it, but they're now in their third year of having two elementary schools going year-round. It's not just summer school. Uh, but, you know, with all the schools in the district start at, on the same day in August, but then as, as the school winds down and the other, other schools, those two elementary schools continue on with the curriculum. There's no extracurriculum, it's just more in-depth. Um, and they have shown, uh, great, uh, results of their, of student performance. Because what they're pointing out is that, uh, children from low social economic status tend to begin, uh, first grade like six months behind or kindergarten. And then that continues on every summer where, uh, where students of like, uh, higher, uh, social economic status may gain a month during the summer. Folks of, of, students of low, uh, social economic status will lose a couple of months. And so that's why by the time we get to the fifth grade, you know, our teachers are saying, you know, look, I've got students here who are reading on a third grade level. How'd that happen? Well, that's what that school district says. So I just put that out there as, as something that, um, to me is, is certainly worth discussing. Uh, you're welcome to read the rest of my, uh, presentations yourself. Thank you.
Mr. President, may I add one item?
Yes.
Uh, the buzzword at, uh, NSBA Conference this year, school safety. And we all know, of course, what happened in Parkland, Florida. And if you go through this, uh, download the app from NSBA, uh, Conference, that's a session, uh, to help on, uh, school safety. But as I said, there's two of us, I shared with you why I chose to go to the session that I did. But you may, uh, want to download that and take a look at it, but not because, uh, that was the buzzword. In fact, both, uh, keynote speakers are mentioning that because, uh, you know, we're sitting here, what happened at Parkland, uh, Florida, at that high school, it could happen here. And then, and everybody walking around thinking that, well, it's not gonna happen to me, it's not gonna happen to me, but anyway, that I talked to one board member, I think he was from Arkansas, that had gone to one of those sessions. He talked about, uh, good information that they had shared in terms of taking back to his district to help implement a, uh, a safe plan, uh, for the school system.
Thank you. Take you both of that, uh, that report.
I have questions. Um, so you can know that I asked a question. We have, uh, we go to these, these, um, conferences and workshops and bring back all this valuable information. How do you want to use some of this, um, both of their presentations or is there, is that process that we're not just going to these, um, trainings that we can start and do? I know we can't do anything that they're bringing back, but do you have a preference of how you would like to even think about this or, or do you need to think about and get back with us? That, that.
Thank you. Um, that concludes our reports. We're moving on now to, uh, section G, the action items. We have, uh, minutes from a work session from March 1st, 2018, uh, that were reviewed and, uh, we discussed briefly at the, uh, work session. Um, motion to approve those minutes? Ms. Elders, thank you very much. Is there a second motion? Mr. Knox, thank you. Any questions or comments around those minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We also have minutes from a regular meeting, March 8th, 2018. Uh, kind of, would you approve those minutes? Davis, thank you very much. And Ms. Ellis, second, thank you very much. Any questions or comments around those minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, we'll now have a financial report. Could any staff members, staff members, and, uh, general public that's here tonight to see the, uh, March 2000, excuse me, February 2018 financial statements? We'll start with the balance sheet first. Currently, the school system has a robust $57.4 million cash balance, which also translates to a 57.5 million, which also robust fund balance. And I think the balance sheet is. Currently, um, on the local revenue side, which includes annual tax, we've totally collected 96.6% of all the revenue year-to-date, of which, as I made, we've collected annual tax. The QBE money, that's still a big revenue, that is only month-to-month based collection, so we're right at what we need to be 52%. Overall, year-to-date, we're at 75.8% collection rate for revenue. On the expense side, overall, we're at 34.1% is what we need to be this time of the year in February. And I'll show you more detail when we get to the cash flow next. Any way you can. The document you see in front of you is the cash flow. It's made up of all the months of July to June 2018. The columns and go are actual data for the months that we've closed. The blue column are the data that are actual budget data, uh, based on the breakdown we had in the four months. As you can see, for the revenue, we have a budget of $142.8 million for revenue. Currently, we are at $143.4 million. We are ahead of budget by $579,150. Of that $400,000 is going to sell to Barker Street location. How the expenses is? Uh, we have a budget of $140.45.9 million for expenditures. We are currently at $142.7 million of projections, which means currently we are underspending by $3.2 million. Initially, we had a deficit built in the budget of $3.01 million. But between the excess revenue and under expenditures for combined total of $3.8, we are currently ahead of a deficit with a surplus of $684,000, of which $400,000 of that is going to sell to Barker Street. With that being the surplus, the projected, uh, cash flow ending June 30th of this year will be $27.2 million. Currently, if you were to take that as percentage of the upcoming budget for fiscal year 2019, of almost $150 million, we'll be at 18%. All right, and can you go to key variables? Next, we're looking at key performance indicators. As you can see, the cash position and the fund balance position is slightly ahead of 2017 by a couple of million dollars, uh, that's reflected in the amount of money that we increased last, a couple of years ago from, excuse me, last year, over where we are for the spending, because we spent less expenditures. Uh, as a percentage of collections, we are currently on par for February. Year-to-date collections, uh, slightly ahead, as you can see on the expense side, we are below collections, we're, uh, below percentage of pay for expenditures than we were in 2017. For the month of February, we collected $7.6 million. And there's a breakdown of it. A large chunk of that was the QBE revenue, which is about $5.4 million. Then one point, then about $1.9 million for annual tax. The monthly expenditures were $11.6 million for the month of February. Majority of that expenditures was instructional area of $7.7. Currently, if you look at budget to actuals, both on the revenue and budget actuals on expenditures, you can see with the red line where we're slightly ahead of revenue collections year-to-date, based on the projected model. And then on the expenditures, you can see where we're slightly below on the projected budget module for expenditures. And last, this is a breakdown by month, uh, starting with the original budget, organized with February, where we currently are at a surplus of $600,000 in February. You can see where we started back in the budget process, where we had a budget deficit, slightly about $2.8 million. And that is the financials for 2018, month February. Any questions? Thank you.
Now, I was so dear close to Dr. Means, I don't have a chance to ask you any more than what you have thought some of that Dr. Means. We're good. We're good, simply.
And, uh, the board will note that, you know, again, this is a little bit different than we've done in the past. Uh, the thought here is, is if we are, we're asking the entire board to vote on the financials, uh, that the opportunity should be there for full explanation of the financials and the opportunity to ask Mr. Hamel any questions. Any, any questions? Mr. Hamel, no? Is there a motion to approve the financial report? Mr. Knox, thank you very much. Second, Mr. Davis, thank you. Any additional questions? Uh, all in favor of approving those? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have policies, regulations, exhibits to be posted for public review for four weeks. And as Ms. Ellis indicated in the report, we have, uh, policy IA, Equity Policy, and Continuous Improvement Policy. Anything to, to add to, to your report? Uh, and again, these, these policies are part of our packet and, uh, and available to the public. Any, is there a motion to, um, to approve posting these for, for four weeks? Mr. Knox, thank you. A second, Mr. Davis, thank you very much. Uh, all in favor? Sorry, any questions around those? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next up, action item number four, is the policies, exhibits, regulations to adopt, up over send. And we have policy GAK1, Criminal Background Check, which has been revised. And we have regulation GAK1, Criminal Background Check, revised. These policies have been up for, uh, four weeks, reviewed by the public, reviewed by our policy committee. Any additional comments from the public? Dr. Myers?
No more received.
Thank you. Can I motion to, um, to adopt these revised policies? Mr. Davis, second, and Ms. Ellis. Any questions or comments around these policies? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much. And we have added a few items. Uh, the first item is Legislative Agenda to, to be submitted to GSBA. This is, uh, Mr. Davis, just want to give a quick recap of, uh, what you've handed out.
Sure. Um, what I did was, with these numbers that are beside, uh, what I've, what I'm proposing, uh, 2D, 2-point-D, point-14 matches what is in the GSBA legislative, um, uh, platform. And what I've done is I've added one sentence to this, and now I'm gonna explain it. Furthermore, GSBA, well, first off, what it says is, Fund QBE, GSBA supports the full funding of QBE funding formula. And what I'm suggesting that GSBA add is, Furthermore, GSBA encourages QBE to be indexed yearly for increases in inflation. When I asked Mr. Hamel, uh, months and months ago, what it would take to have a fully funded school system, what does that mean in the state of Georgia? He said, we need to, needed to index QBE, um, to inflation. It makes sense to me. I'm on teacher retirement and I, I'm, I'm getting increases, um, yearly, um...
I think everyone has, everyone has, uh...
Yeah, everyone should have a copy of this.
Okay, great. So that, so this is the bold, bold language there.
That's, that's what I'm suggesting add. And, uh, let me just say that when we met with Samuel Kowzer, he's, he was surprised. And I really couldn't convince him that that's the case. So I think, I don't think the GSBA's been doing a strong enough job. So anyway, I'm, I'm suggesting that we add that, that, that word. Um, you wanna do one at a time or just all three of them?
Go ahead.
Okay. There are other, there are two other changes. And what I've done with the numbers is simply add in them under, uh, Federal Issues, which is a section within the GSB, GSBA platform of their legislative agenda. Uh, and what I'm proposing is, is the following. GSBA urges Congress to pass Deferred Action for Children Arrivals, uh, legislation that will permanently legalize those who enter the United States as children with, um, documentation. And I believe that, that this is consistent with the position that this board has taken, um, in terms of, uh, supporting the education of our, uh, our students who are, are either undocumented or come from undocumented, uh, families. Um, and so I ask that that also be put in there. I think it's gonna be, uh, be a struggle for, for other, um, school districts perhaps to buy into that. And I think it's very important that the statement be made and that it be argued on behalf of. The second is 4.8. I've added that number as well. That's consistent with their numbering system. Uh, GSBA urges Congress to pass immigration legislation that will lift the fear and uncertainty that pervades the undocumented community and negatively impacts the education of children whose parents lack legal status. Uh, and that's consistent to me with, with the concerns that this board has, has expressed, particularly in our Safe Schools Resolution. Um, I'm also sensitive to the fact that, um, there's a couple of board members that, that would suggest certain changes, perhaps, in tweaking of the language. And I ask that in, um, uh, passing this, because these, these have to be passed if we're going to, um, present them on the 23rd of April. They cannot simply be, uh, introduced without the support of a school board. And so what I suggest is, is that we pass these without understanding, but also with the understanding that if there are, uh, minor tweaks to the language, um, that may also be consistent with, with our support of these resolutions. that may also be consistent with our support of these resolutions.
Thank you. And again, these are for Fulton Clark County School District to be included in the conversation around the GSBA forming their legislative agenda for the year.
That's correct.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
And I just want to add, this will probably be the first time since I've been on the board that we have made any recommendations to the GSBA legislation.
We did last year.
You did, you did last year, right? But I'm just saying, I guess that you've been here. But I, but I wanted to make, you know, even if we pass it, I guess the point I was trying to make, even if we pass it, somebody has to speak to it to get it on the agenda. So just passing it doesn't mean it's going to end up on the agenda. So I just want to put that out there, for those who may not know how that works.
Thank you.
So we pass this, it gets passed on to GSBA, you know, the, the, so.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I think I'm in there.
Thank you. Is there a motion then, to adopt this as the Clark County School District's school board legislative agenda?
Oh, if you don't mind if I rephrase. Not a legislative agenda, but our recommendations for GSBA to consider in their positions.
Thank you. I defer to my colleagues. Is, is, is there any concern on doing these all together?
I don't have a problem with that all together.
I have no problem with all together.
Is there any school board member that does have, have a problem doing them all together? Okay, John, and I would suppose that we separate them, if I'm making the.
Would you like, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion that we take these independently.
Uh, would you like to make a motion about that?
Okay, the first motion is to, to adopt the two point D point fourteen with the extra wording as what we would propose at the Government Operations Committee of GSBA on the twenty-third of April for their legislative agenda.
Thank you, Xavier. It's worthy, thank you. Any questions or concerns or comments regarding two D fourteen? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, I would now like to recommend to this board four points seven. And again, this is my number, but reads, that talks about, I won't read it again, but it talks about the DACA legislation and encouraging Congress, because this is under the federal issues that the Georgia School Board Association does in their legislative agenda upon occasion. And so I won't, I won't read that, but I will ask that it be the will of the board that this also be presented to the Government Operations Committee of GSBA on August one, April twenty-third.
I see.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thorpe, for a second. Any comments or questions around four point seven? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Okay, the, with the third recommendation I have is, I've noted four point eight, and it talks about immigration legislation in general, that they're become, you know, that, that Congress resolved this issue in such a way that it doesn't maintain itself as a cloud over the, the community of Athens Clark County, as well as our schoolchildren and their families. So I move that this also be accepted as a recommendation from this board to the Government Operations Committee of GSBA on April twenty-third.
Thank you. For a second, Xavier.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Thorpe. Got any questions?
Right, we got to my objection. I don't know what legislation is that would quote, lift the fear and uncertainty. I, I think when this gets to GSBA, they're going to say, we don't know what that is, that's too diffuse, and it won't go anywhere.
If I can respond, I mean, right now, I'm just simply talking about any immigration legislation, because right now, there is, there is nothing out there. And so this is a, this is an issue that, that Congress has refused to deal with in addressing the needs of the undocumented.
It would, would create, create or develop anxiety under the sector. If there's nothing out there, are we asking them to put some, create something?
I think that the term often in the national dialogue is comprehensive immigration reform.
Yeah.
So perhaps it could be an encouragement that that happen. Which isn't, which isn't very clear, it doesn't get that lot of specificity per se, but that it comprehensive immigration reform be in our required.
I'm, I'm just, I don't know, I want to go in.
Well, I just want wording that would actually pass muster, right, GSBA, and I don't think this does. This is, you can't pass legislation that would fear, you can't legislate that. Not to prolong the conversation, but is there a better wording for this?
And again, in our, in, in our conversation, perhaps, is this something that they, that in the, in the tweaking of the language, we can, we can hone that in a little bit tighter?
Before we go to make them, right?
Before we go to make them, right.
I don't think that would be the best way. Because I do agree with John, it is very vague, and, I mean, you just don't want to send up something you know is going to get shot down. But I think the wording probably could be worked on. I think we can, in the spirit of the, the, I, I'll make, I'll second, if you want to change your motion to, in the spirit of the wording, and let's work on the wording.
And I'd be very willing to do that, I just want folks to help me do that. You know, John helped me, and Jared with helping. I mean, I, I.
I understand.
So, you know, I'm, I'm all for that, but I just, you know, Carol, I mean, I would just like to get some feedback, because I think we're all on the same page, it's a matter of how we word it, and I'm very receptive to that. And again, I apologize, but again, we did not have the, the April eighteenth deadline until last week.
So you're saying you want to withdraw your motion?
I'm not withdrawing it, I'm, I'm simply asking for the, for the freedom to work with other board members to report it, to answer objections that John has and perhaps others on the board.
Yeah, and I do concur with John that the language is very, very vague and non-directed. I'm not sure what we're trying to do, and if you are going to be down there to present this and defend that and get the background of the rationale, I just want to make sure that we're clear.
I, I hope.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions around that?
Do I understand this, are we amending the motion?
I think we're sticking with the original motion, but we're thinking with the idea that this language will be tightened and refined to maintain its, the spirit of what's there, but, but it could be a more actionable language than, than perhaps.
And, and we could send that last language out to everybody prior to making them. That would work.
Yes, I bet that.
No, I know, the new language, whatever that is.
Yes, and also I do.
And it's a counter, they need to be, that's always the one struggling with the collective understanding.
If I, if I understand it correctly, there are a couple of things. One is, by using the word comprehensive, that does have a certain connotation within Washington DC. And, and so maybe that would be some clarity. And the other, the other concern that I heard John express is somehow the other taking out the fear and uncertainty situation, that, that particular wording, and making it more of a, of a legal concept.
Yeah, because fear and uncertainty is relative to whoever, so I can understand that. But I, I think what we need to do is get this moving so we can work on the language and, and. And, is that okay?
Okay, what, what about, we just. Okay, can I just make?
Don't try to fix it now, please don't.
Five words, five words. GSBA urges Congress to pass comprehensive immigration legislation.
Okay.
Does that, does that mean objections?
I'm good, I'm good, I just, yeah. So that means we do not have a whole word assignment to help you?
No, I mean, that, Carol, does it, does that, does that raise your concerns?
Yeah, it's still a little vague, but I'm not sure how we're going to. I, I think the appropriate place for it to be better, if this board wants to move forward, would be with the government committee in May.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So we have a, a motion on the floor, and a second to adopt the language as amended in four point eight. We all agree with on that? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Next up, we added action item number six, letter to Senator Tippens.
Could that be read?
Any questions or comments around that?
I think this is so great.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Finally, we added number seven to the action items. This is the selection of a delegate from our board to the GSBA Delegate Assembly in Savannah, Georgia.
It's voting, and I would like to know that they have any.
I second that.
Okay, on behalf on the floor, Ms. Thorpe as the delegate from Clark County School District. Ms. Thorpe, is that something you accept?
Of course I do, so why not? Yes.
Yeah, anybody else, any questions or comments?
Yeah, yeah. I, I was just going to say that even though I'm the delegate, other board members, you know, we never take a full board thing, but I just want to make sure people know that board members, some, some boards bring on. I just want to.
Thank you. Then, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. President, we, we are agreeing. Mr. Davis is currently presenting these positions.
It may be.
It would make it.
Right.
If we were GSBA, what, Mr. Payne typically attends that conference?
Actually, um, Mr. Payne was sick last year, remember, and I actually was a delegate last year.
Okay, so you're going to be, that was going to have to alternate. We didn't have one before.
We didn't have one.
Point of information, I think that we finally figured out that Mr. Payne went as district representative in that, oh, vetoed last year, representative of the board.
And so, now, he'd always voted all those years now, but he just didn't get the power.
Gotcha, thank you. Moving on to, we have a number of items as part of our consent agenda. They are eight through fifteen. On our printed agenda, they show as five through twelve, but as we've amended the agenda, eight through fifteen. Um, those speeches have been discussed during our work session. Is there a motion to approve those? Mr. Knox, thank you very much, for the motion. A second. Ms. Davis, thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you, any opposed? Thank you very much. Uh, we have title number thirteen, sorry, it's printed number thirteen, this is item number sixteen. Insurance benefits broker contract removal. Is there a motion to approve this contract? Ms. Davis, thank you, second from Ms. Williams. Any questions or comments around this?
I, you know, we did this on Thursday, and then twelve hours later, I was on a plane, and then I got back on Tuesday, on Monday night. But I did have, I raised questions, and that's why it's not on the consent agenda, and I asked for more information. I don't know if any board members presented or obtained.
Mr. Davis, do you mind resharing the questions?
Okay, what, what, I mean, and again, this is, I hesitate to share something, something personal, but it was, it was a situation of, of, sometimes when you, when you have a tooth extraction and you have a permanent put in place, it takes many, many months to go through that process. And so I was in a situation of having under one insurance carrier coverage for the tooth to be extracted, but under our current insurance, having it not covered in terms of the replacement. I have since gotten that approved after a lot of phone calls. What concerns me is twofold. One is, is I'm, I'm hoping to do, that this is not just favoritism for me. I, I think my situation is fairly unique, but I can see other folks having a situation of where they start dental work and then we change insurance companies. And that raises my second point, is I, is I know that this, that we engage as insurance benefits broker free of charge, paid for by the insurance providers, whoever we select, and I get that. But we've done a number of changes with, with dental companies in particular, and that's just the one that I'm familiar with. And I'm, I'm not saying, I, I don't think the district does it vitally, lightly, but, you know, I think that we need to be kind of, this person certainly needs to be aware of, you know, when, when this person comes up and says, we need to switch from Ameritas to MetLife because we have a better deal, which I think is exactly what we want, but I think we also need the wording in such a way so that it has coverage. So that was, that, that's.
As a, I know my colleagues in the district office have heard me say this before, as a former HR director, I've worked with an insurance broker advance. And I think Dr. Freeman and Ms. Duke do a very good job of working with a current broker. You're accurate in sharing that when a school district makes the decision to switch from one insurance carrier to the other, that's a difficult decision to make. And you have to keep in mind the duration of contract coverage. If you switch from one carrier to the next, will service that was rendered by one carrier be honored by the next carrier? In my year here, I've seen Dr. Freeman and Ms. Duke do a good job in pushing our board in a good way of saying, remember these things as we consider making moves. I've also been impressed with this broker that has been recommended this evening because when a call comes from Human Resources, they spring to action. If there is a specific issue that Human Resources would like them to advocate on behalf of a, of an employee or someone who we are carrying insurance for, this broker does the work behind the scenes to make that happen. As you know, the state of Georgia, health insurance is not one of the issues that we go out and input to market in terms of a broker relationship. But insurance items like life insurance, dental, are things that we're constantly trying to find the best financial deal without interrupting service for many of our employees. So what I would say to you, Mr. Davis, is the situation that you described, very often, what we find in such a situation is. what we find in such a situation is that actually the person who's working behind the scenes on the behalf of our employee or the person that we cover in the school district is the broker. It is the individual that we're asking you to act on this evening. Without that type of support, it becomes very difficult for Human Resources to serve our employees well. I'm talking around the issue because your issue that you put on the table is very personal, but what I can share with you is that there's a lot of deliberation and thought put behind making shifts in insurance any time that comes up, and I was able to watch that firsthand this school year. I think our HR department does a good job of being thoughtful.
Thank you, Greg. I have since forgotten whether we called for a motion second, and if you did, okay, good. Then all in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you very much. As number 17, we have a resolution around equity that was proposed. This is a resolution adopting working definitions for educational equity and social justice. This was again part of our packet we discussed in our work session. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Ms. Davis, thank you very much. A second. Ms. Ellis, thank you. Questions, comments?
I have a question, Mr. President. Do we have the actual, because I know that we were still looking at the wording of it as late as today, if I understand correctly. So, because I thought, I thought Don had put something out.
We have the final wording in our packet.
What Don put out was the equity, educational equity, and...
Okay. What, where the...
This is the resolution.
This is the resolution. That's a different thing.
Okay, so where's the common resolution?
It's in your packet. It's almost to the last page. Just read the form.
Okay. Can somebody show it to me? Is it here?
It's in your email.
Okay.
I had it right here.
Okay, because I had asked a certain line to put in, was it? Put in or none?
I'm referring to the recommendations from the Ad hoc committee.
Right. Is that not what we're talking about here?
That's not what we're talking about.
Oh, I am so sorry. Okay. We...
Any other questions around this resolution? All in favor? Thank you. Next on our agenda is an executive session. Mr. Knox? Yes. A recommendation, sort of a motion to go into executive session. Thank you. Like Ms. Davis?
Mr. Rock, do you have to read the whole thing? I'll tell you anything.
So we need to recommend the reasons for us to go into executive session. And I believe we need to talk about the, recommend executive session for all the reasons. Sorry, do we need all the reasons or just... No. Mr. Bybee?
Yes, please.
Mr. President, I believe you in this case would be, it would be under the purpose of to discuss and deliberate upon appointment, employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action dismissal, or evaluation, or rating of a public official or employee, or to interview applicants for a position. Super today will be that first clause is the reason why we're going into full session.
Correct. And then again, I believe we have two reasons for executive session. Is that right?
I think for this purpose right now, yes. Later, it would be for the purpose to consult immediately with possibly pertaining to pending or potential litigation settlements, claims administered, proceedings, or judicial actions brought, or to be brought by or against a school district, or an official or employee, or in which the officer or employee may be directly involved.
Right. So the executive session we're about to go into is for both of those reasons, is that right?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. And then we have a motion from Dr. Knox that we're going into executive session for these purposes. And maybe a second from Ms. Davis. All in favor? Thank you.